Okay, good afternoon. This is a concept briefing for a proposed development by the name of Coyote Ridge. So this is a study session. No minutes are taken, no decisions are made. It's really an opportunity for we as commissioners almost have our own community meetings. So if there's any concerns or areas that we'd like to see really a deeper dive into when it comes time for application, it's kind of an opportunity to kind of raise those now. But as I said, we're not making any decisions, so we're just here to listen and comment. So I'll turn it over to you. You look like you're the one that's gonna be doing the presenting. So if you, and if you could introduce yourselves as you come to the mic.
Yep. My name is Julie Gammack and I'm with THK Associates. We are the planners for the project. Thank you for having us today. We look forward to presenting our project. So a quick introduction on our side. Again, my name is Julie Gammack and I'm a planner with THK Associates. We have Dave Patroci and Bill Hart here. They are the applicants for the project. And also Dan Conway. He's with THK Associates as well and is an economist. Just a quick overview. So our project is basically located at the intersection of County Road 178 and 13. So north of Elizabeth. Here's a overview of our current site plan concept. This has a mix of residential types as well as two acres of retail proposed. I'll dive a little bit deeper into those mixes here in a moment. You can see here that the, that Dave and Bill own approximately 200, a little over 200 acres. The four 35 acre sites on the north end of our concept are going to remain 35 acre sites and be sold as 35 acre sites. The only portion of the property in total that's being developed is the southwest corner, which totals approximately 108 acres. And the 108 acres is all that is included in our concept brief. The existing zoning for the site is agricultural. We're proposing to zone it to a PUD. This will allow us to do a variety of lot sizes, including 70 foot wide by 110 foot deep lots for 49 units, 60 foot wide by 110 foot deep lots for 65 units, 50 foot wide by 110 foot lots for 91 units, and we're proposing 50 duplex units. As you guys know, with the PUD, design guidelines will be developed to discuss setbacks, footprints, landscape requirements, et cetera. We have not started developing those design guidelines, but we'll work closely with the applicant and with staff as we move into that process. Just so that the commissioners are aware, there is internal discussion right now to convert the two acres of retail proposed at the southwest corner to potentially be a few more duplex units. We haven't confirmed that decision yet. It will be dependent on us being able to meet our water requirements, but we just want you to know that it's a discussion internally. So if something should change between now and next time we speak, you guys know that it may be coming. So the current concept shows plus or minus 48 acres of parks and open space proposed. We have, as I mentioned, the four 35 acre lots will remain or be sold as is, and the floodplain areas as designated by FEMA will remain. Here we have a graphic just showing how our open space is calculated. The green areas are park areas for a total of 4.61 acres. And the cyan color or turquoise color is open space for a total of 43.61 acres. We've included the residential, commercial, and right-of-way calculations here as well to show that project total of 108 acres. Again, just, it was a question that we had several discussions with staff. You know, those 35 acre lots, they're gonna, they're gonna stay or be sold as 35 acre lots. We are working currently with LSC, our traffic consulting engineer, to put together a traffic study. And we will reevaluate the access points shown on this concept once that traffic study is complete, just to make sure that we are meeting demands and providing access in places that are safe. For the water demand, we have a will serve letter from Spring Valley Metropolitan District for both our water and sanitation needs. We're aware of the county requirements for the .4 acre foot per residential lot, the one acre foot per 35 acre lot, and the three acre foot per commercial areas. We recognize that we have to require, that we have to prove a 300-year water supply, and we are currently working on our augmentation plan. The will serve letter has been provided to county staff. Dan, do you want to talk to this, or you want me to keep going?
Yes, I can talk. My background's urban land economics, which is the theory behind real estate markets, how, why they act the way they do. We have completed about 100-page market analysis and feasibility study for the project, and that's how we came about the recommendations for the lot sizes and the retail development. But some of the things that I wanted to point out is that we expect the project to be built out over a five-to-seven year period. The average cost of a single-family detached unit will be about $650,000. The market value of the total community at buildout will be just under $177 million. It'll create an assessed value of about $13.5 million. And annually, we will generate revenue for Alford County for the four breakouts that the county has, and that will amount to about $350,000 per year from our property taxes. The school district will receive about $620,000 per year from property taxes. Also, with the development of the retail, we're estimating that the county will get about $80,000 per year. And the state of Colorado has a 3.6% sales tax, and they'll be receiving about $330,000 per year from sales tax revenue from retail on the property. So that's kind of a, a quick overview of some of the impacts that what we characterize as the fiscal impacts from the overall project. And we can discuss it in any level of detail that you'd like to discuss.
That's the end of our presentation. I'm, I'm happy to share this. I'm happy to share this with staff to pass on to the commissioners so that you have a copy of this. But certainly happy to answer any questions or have any discussion.
I think his question is for 178 and 13 to intersect, and you'll be timed on it.
I've gotta learn how to be a gentleman. Traffic there at the corner of 13 and 178 going north and then going east, it'll be inter, that'll be a critical issue that has to have a good solution to it. And it may be as much as a four-way stop sign, or it may be as much as a traffic circle or traffic. It's gonna be something, because that 178 right now is one of the highest traffic roads in the county. And then there's that odd bend in it. So I'm not telling you what to do, because I'm waiting to hear what you recommend, but it's going to be a critical issue.
Yep, and we're aware of that. We're aware of the, the traffic, current traffic demand and the concerns about the additional traffic at that intersection. LSC, our traffic consultant, does quite a bit of work in the county, so they're aware of just the general grumblings, mumblings, ongoings, whatever you want to call it. So we are looking at that both from a vehicular congestion and from a safety standpoint.
And then the other question is metro districts.
So we are currently discussing setting up a metro district. As I mentioned, the water and sanitation will come from Spring Valley, and we have provided a will serve letter already. The metro district for overall maintenance, streets, those types of infrastructure, and we're working on developing now, and the current plan is to have that on the November Yes.
I know it's not actually part of your development, but your 35 acre parcel on your northeast side, how is access granted? Just out of curiosity to that parcel.
Oil road from 174. That's where it always got near. The oil well is no longer active there, but the road still exists. Are you talking about all four?
No, I can see where you're coming through the development on there, but that northeast one is kind of off by itself there with the drainage. I guess the only thing I would, would comment on, the accents points on the southern part of the development, those first two appear to be pretty close, so pay attention to what the traffic study says on that, if that looks like it's gonna be a issue or not on safety of being that close together.
We'll do that. We'll also confirm with staff that we're meeting any roadway or traffic requirements from public works.
That's why we're doing the traffic study early. We don't need to have that done yet. That seems to be a point, not just everybody else, but a point we want to know what we're gonna need to do.
Yeah. A couple of thing, um.
Sorry. I was.
Okay.
That's why I put this here in the middle, so you can use it too.
On water, you had mentioned might be townhouses versus commercial based on water availability. Are you looking at commercial being the higher water consumer or the townhouses?
Well, they'll be duplexes, but.
Or, I'm sorry, this was like duplex.
They'll be the same amount of water per rooftop, I think, as the houses.
Okay. Just when you presented it, you said that decision was a water decision, which threw...
Yeah. I actually think per code that commercial takes one acre foot per eight. Sorry, I'm having, it doesn't seem to want to move. Let me try. Oh, now we go. Here we go. So the .4 acre foot is required per residential lot, so for each unit, you'd have .8 acre feet, because they're a duplex, obviously. And then you have the three acre foot per commercial area. So it, the, the math, the duplexes become a little bit higher demand, but again, in this case, we need to make sure that we have the ability to serve based on the requirements of the county.
And you talk about commercial, what kind of commercial are you thinking about?
At this point, it hasn't been determined. We don't have any interested buyers. We aren't necessarily out on the market. Dan can maybe speak to it a little bit more.
Yes, we're looking at convenience commercial, probably a convenience store and yeah, something similar to that.
And you, I guess you answered my other question of, so you are looking at duplexes to commercial lot, or to residential lot consumers?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other, it's like the open space was primarily the floodplain on the east and west. I know I go by that property a lot, but it's, are there concerns or, I think you're gonna have a lot of drainage kind of from the middle to the east and the west at fairly high rise in ground.
There's a hill growing up in the middle of both the floodplains on either side.
And this is of course subject to change, because we haven't started our civil engineering yet, but because we're being served by the sanitation for Spring Valley, I'm expecting that a lot of that infrastructure will be piped, as opposed to sheet flowing into the floodplain.
Right, probably. Okay. Yeah, we just caution in that area when, I think, when Spring Valley was doing some of the roadwork on, I believe it was 174, they had to overX almost 24 feet to get solid soils to build off of, so in such a tight area.
Yep, and we're in pretty constant communication with Jim Marshall. He's been, maybe, is consulting the right word a little bit, and just kind of sharing his experiences and some of their lessons learned on, on Spring Valley. So we are in communication with him.
I've known Jim. We bought this property 22 years ago, and so we've known Jim since then. Sometimes on really good communication level and some not quite as good.
Yeah, so, so we are, we are taking advantage of the benefit of his experience at Spring
Hit the access immediately, so. You've already had your community meeting?
We have had our community meeting. We had it in April. Mark was present with us. We had about 50 participants. The, the big items of concern we heard were traffic, water, and then just, you know, this is certainly a much more dense development than what is historically in this area. It's starting to become more common, but it's, you know, kind of new to residents, and they have, they have concerns about the more urban feel. So we, we did provide meeting minutes to staff. We had a handful of residents who asked for copies of the minutes, which we'd sent along as well. We provided the concept map and the vicinity map to those who were interested, and I, I haven't heard anything more from any of the community members since that meeting. We provided our information and business cards, and so they have a way to contact us if needed.
I know it's...
I actually believe the commissioners were also copied on those meeting minutes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, just, like I said, it's kind of a newly building out area, so.
Yep.
In your, at the community meeting, did you feel that, that was primarily folks that live close into that area that would be impacted, or a mix of folks that just have general concerns?
I can't specifically answer that. I suspect that we had a mix of both. There certainly were some folks who lived or accessed their homes via Delbert. The, the concern about the traffic volume on Delbert was, was mentioned several times. But we didn't specifically kind of ask anyone where they were coming from or, or how, how close in proximity they were to the project.
But most of the comments were with regard to the traffic on Delbert and the water, the concern for water and that we were meeting that 300-year commitment.
Which are valid.
Yes.
So, yeah, and I really do believe the, the access off that corner and the tight turn on that corner is probably the, the biggest thing that needs to be upged.
And again, we haven't started any of our civil engineering. We don't have our traffic numbers back yet, but internally, we've discussed a little bit, and I, I know that Jim Marshall has been part of this discussion, potentially putting in a traffic circle just based on giving the flow for the volume that we think is potentially there, but that hasn't been determined as a final answer.
Does the county now have roundabouts?
We do not have one. I think there's one that potentially might be planned.
You discourage them?
I mean, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we don't.
At some locations, and certainly that location that you brought up, it could work very nicely and keep traffic moving and not, you know, delayed with a stoplight. Because most of the, the pressure is to move south along 13 or move to the east.
Yeah, because currently, we don't, of the very few traffic signals within the county, none of them are maintained by our public works, so. So I know they would prefer pavement that doesn't move.
Yes.
And you know, one of the things ideally, and notice I use the word ideally, not necessarily doable, but we like to see for a development of this nature, at least two real exits. And really, this one only has one. So if you could extend 178 all the way over to where it would tie into the north-south road, or at the east side of your property, go down through the land that Spring Valley has, which takes you back down to 174. And that way, you'd be able to do a loop and, because you know, if there was a, an accident on 178 in your subdivision, you wouldn't be able to get out.
So we, we've also had that same concern, and we're looking at that and looking at how to deal with that. One of the initial ideas that we've had is Bill and Dave actually own, and I don't, I don't have a good picture of it, they actually own part of the land to the west of 13 and north of 178. So we have the ability to almost make a cut across, so that if there was something to happen in the intersection, we could provide fire access.
Dave works at the fire department, he's already gotten approval.
And we've, we've already run this by the fire chief, just to see if it was an option that would potentially work for them. So still certainly looking into it. We recognize that there's value, not only for just circulation, but also for firelife safety. Yep.
We do really expect that with it, we have a real set of access.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking at the topography going east on what would be 178, and there is kind of a, a challenge there. That's why we're trying to explore maybe some of the...
Floodplain as well, yeah.
Yeah.
And then a lot of distance you'd have to go. And we basically, we have to do all that, that'd make it tough to, you know how Jim Marshall gets so upset about building roads, and he had 2,000 lots. We don't have, we have one tenth of that.
Yeah, so we're just looking at different options.
Yep, and we'll continue to do so.
One of the reasons for the traffic study that we're gonna get to.
I'll just comment that I appreciate the variety of housing. Our housing needs assessment showed that we need a variety, and this is part of filling, filling that. So I do appreciate the effort on that. I think that's, that's something that we've got to continue to look at as a county to fulfill that, that need.
Did you have anything cropped up in your mind while we were chatting there?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark Dadnider, Director of Community and Economic Development. Just, you know, going back to the community meeting, I would, I would say, yeah, there was a, the concerns as was expressed already regarding the traffic on Delbert Road and also the, the water issues, and you know, it did come up, you know, were other wells gonna be drilled, and you know, the applicant obviously indicated they're gonna be tapping into the Spring Valley Ranch water and sand, so that was, seemed to be a positive there. Commissioners, you brought up the, the housing variety there, and I would agree with the housing needs assessment, there were some folks that I think that had an issue possibly with the duplex or the paired home, you know, in terms of that density. I know that's a, you know, that variety, those alternative product types that sometimes can, you know, raise concerns when everything's a single-family detached residential.
The one point about the duplexes, and that was a valid comment at the neighborhood meeting, but our intent with the duplexes is to offer a residential unit that's priced basically $200,000 below what we think the median will be, and that, that's a badly needed product in this market here. And we've been working over in the, the town of Elizabeth with similar types of issues, and the duplex unit seems to be a unit that bridges that gap and provides the very needed housing at the introductory housing level. This is Douglas County.
They really are just two single families with a common wall in between. I mean, they, other than that, they don't, they're not townhomes or condos, they're just have a, it's usually a lot more towards the Denver area, of course, but, and I think you're the one that brought up we need wider price ranges, so this accomplishes that.
And the larger home builders prefer the duplex because of the construction liabilities. It allows them to limit the construction. That's why you see so many of the active developments have a duplex product in them.
And we probably, if we had had to, put in more single families instead of those, we did that for the reason that you discussed. Our limitation is water. That's it. We had land available, our limitation's water. So we start out with about 250 acres, and we're gonna end with about 250 homes, and that's one per acre on average.
Yeah, just on the, is the water, I assume you'll, the water will be transferred to the Spring Valley District?
Right. Yeah, we adjudicated the water 22 years ago when we bought the property, because we were told that somebody had the water be more valuable than the land.
They were probably right. Is the water to be transferred just that under the 108 acres, or is a portion of the 30?
There's a little bit left for the four 35s, but yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
To build a little bit on the, the school district comment, in the community meeting minutes that were provided back to staff, there is a map of the school district boundary, so you can, just for reference, if, if anyone cares.
The question I have is, I keep forgetting to ask Jim Marshall, but is there a grade school being built on his property just to the south of us? Somewhere along the line, I heard that there was going to be, but I might be wrong.
I, I have not heard. I, I know Doug, I mean, within the Douglas County School District, I know there was no appetite for building outside of their county lines, so, and I'm not sure. I think Elizabeth School District was looking at a K-12, perhaps a charter or a K-8, or perhaps a charter K-8 in their independence footprint, but that's...
Spring Valley land, though.
No.
I would think with the number of residential units now at, at Spring Valley, as well as in the surrounding developments around there, that they're to the point where they're gonna need an element of...
Right, and I thought I saw it on some map somewhere, but...
I'm sure it's being considered. Jim is really good about addressing issues like that.
Water that's going to go into the water system, is it just on the developed area? Does it include a portion of those water under the 40 acres? And the reason I ask that question, each 40 acre lot is going to have somewhere between 50 and 60 acre, or no, 40 to 45 acre feet available just under it.
I think the water...
And I'm, that's just a guess. I'd have to...
Water attorney, and he works all that out. He seems to know what he's doing. He was the same water attorney that Jim Marshall used, right? Right? Yeah. And so he's the smart one about that, not, not us. And so he's, he knows how it's all gonna work. He's the one that'll draw up the, that part of the transfer document.
The reason I brought up that point is if you took one of the 40s and made it your open space, and then convey, then you could use the water for the, the main development.
We're taking the, the water from the entirety of the pro, of the project with the 35 acre parcels and this, and combining it and giving it to Spring Valley District. We're saving enough just for one residential unit per 35 acre parcel, which will kind of ensure that the, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, they couldn't do any kind of, yeah.
Unless they brought water from somewhere else.
Water's too expensive, wouldn't make any sense. If we didn't have the water we have, I'm sure we wouldn't be doing any development.
Also, just as a side note, as Bill said, we adjudicated all of this water 22 years ago, and we have not used any of it. So, I mean, if you don't use it, you lose it basically. So, not to say that we've built up a reserve, but 22 years we have not used the water, and now it seems like a good time to put it to use.
I guess I, I know that there's no decisions that come out of this meeting, but from a process standpoint, are we told that we can move forward? Is there some, some, some notification from staff, or can we just move into our preliminary plat process?
Typically, after the concept brief, you know, if there is any feedback that we get staff from senior leadership, we certainly impart that with the applicant. But we, staff, would be at a point to support the applicant in, in preparing for a formal application submittal.
I will make sure that Catherine gets a copy of this presentation so that she can share as needed.
Okay. Yeah, I would think from our, from our side, obviously very interested in traffic circulation and access.
Yep.
I think you've covered the water availability well, and that, the other, I just, soils and terrain, I know you can move dirt. Dirt's easy to...
Dirt's easy to move.
Dirt's easy to move, but you've got...
Cost money.
Quite a bit of, quite a bit of elevation change from the center to the side, so just how that lays out when you're got building pads that are perhaps only 50 feet wide. It's an engineering problem, I guess we'll look and see how it's solved.
Where I grew up, this would not be called coyote. It'd be a coyote.
Oh, there you go.
Is it a Nadian reference?
I haven't spoken to him back yet.
I guess we're done. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to show you something on the map.